I'd like to call the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee meeting to order, February 11th, 2016. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, we'll start with our introduction to members.
Bill Chaplin, Blackstone.
Jane Regio, Millville.
Steve Tringali, Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent.
Dave Thompson, Assistant Superintendent.
We have a wonderful presentation tonight.
I wanted to welcome everyone here tonight. The best part of being a superintendent is celebrating student achievement. And I can't thank Mrs. Warren enough for all of the work in getting everybody here. So, the floor is yours, Mrs. Warren.
Can you hang on one second? Can you come up to the table so that we can hear you? Thank you. Or take the mic.
Endangered.
You won't be able to hear it, but it can hear you.
Alright.
Endangered Species Project. Purpose. Part of the fourth grade curriculum is to study animals and how they meet their basic needs in their environment.
It's working.
It's on.
These basic needs are the right climate, oxygen, water, shelter, and food. If an animal cannot meet these basic needs in its environment, the animal must adapt.
Before you continue, can you tell me your name?
Beck Jenkins.
Sorry?
Beck.
Beck, nice to meet you. How about you?
Mae Holmes.
Okay, can you guys start with your names and then tell us what you're gonna read? Thanks.
My name is Hannah Collagen. If the animal cannot adapt, it might slowly decline in population. This might lead to the animal being placed on an endangered species list. We will share some of the topics and what we learned about these animals.
My name is Adrian Harris. The process we used was that we went to the computer lab once a week to research our animal and print off pictures.
My name is Nicholas Ahern. We also use the iPad cart, which contains twenty iPads. This allowed us to research important facts on our animal.
Hi, my name is Julia Madsen. Thank you for allowing us to share our learning with you.
I'm Beck Jenkins and I did my project on Tasmanian devils. The name of the animal is the Tasmanian devil. The scientific name of the animal is Ascorphalus heresi. The classification of my animal is a mammal. Tasmanian devils are nocturnal hunters. They are solitary animals. They are very grumpy. They have a big fit when threatened by predators. They give off a bad odor when in stress. They make fierce noises, harsh coughs, snarls, and screeches. Tasmanian devils are extinct on the Australian mainland because dingoes ate them about four hundred years ago. They are endangered also in Tasmania because of a disease called Devil Facial Tumor Disease. The disease was discovered in 1990 and it killed thousands of devils. They became endangered in 2009. Tasmanian devils have the strongest bite force of any mammal. Twenty-fourty imps are born in the first four to the mother's pouch are the only ones that live.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What was the most interesting fact that you learned about your animal?
That they had the strongest bite force of any mammal.
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Glad I've never met one.
I'm Mae Holmes and I decided to do the piping pulver for my endangered species project.
The what kind of polar bear?
Piping pulver.
Pulver.
Oh. I mean, hurt polar bear. Okay. Thank you.
The common name of the piping pulver is the piping pulver. The scientific name is Tardis. The classification is a bird. Oxygen. When a piping pulver breathes, the oxygen passes through its lungs and goes into the bird's air sacs. When the piping pulver breathes out, the air goes through their lungs and out their mouth. So, the piping pulver gets oxygen twice, but humans only get the oxygen once. Interesting facts. When beachgoers go to the beach, they are meant by ropes and signs saying they can't go in a certain area because of the piping pulver nesting. Sometimes a piping pulver will stick its foot into the sand and it will vibrate to bring food to the top of the sand. I have a family story about the piping pulver. It is about my dog that I used to have. His name was Joel. My dad let him loose to run on the beach and he went under the ropes and into the range of piping pulver nesting. He got in trouble with environmental protection and almost got fined.
Oh, my God.
Thank you.
My name is Hannah Collagen and I did the red panda for my project. The common name is the red panda. The scientific name is Alchros flusens and the classification is a mammal. Habitat. Red pandas live in the eastern Himalayas and southwestern China. They prefer living in the mountains and mixed delicious and comfort forests. They like areas with old trees and dense bamboo. Red pandas like cooler temperatures between fifty and seventy degrees Fahrenheit. Description. When red pandas are born, they only weigh around four ounces. After three months, they usually have all of their adult fur and coloring. They are a bit larger than a domestic cat. The head and body length is twenty to twenty-five inches and its tail is eleven to twenty-three inches. Little grown mammals weigh eight to thirteen pounds and females weigh six to thirteen pounds. They have long reddish-brown fur on their upper bodies and blockish fur on their lower bodies. They have a light face with markings like a raccoon and their tail is striped with yellow and red rings. Interesting facts. The red panda has nicknames such as lesser panda, red bear cat, and red cat bear. Predators of the red panda are the snow leopard, mardons, and humans.
Hannah, have you ever seen a red panda?
No.
Has anybody ever seen one? Yeah, there's one at the Roger Williams Zoo. In Providence. There's one at the Roger Williams Zoo in Providence, so you can ask your parents to take you there someday.
Now, Mrs. Warren, if it's okay with you, the committee would like to come in and look at everybody's project. If we could take a couple minutes and do that? Great.
Do you have anything else you need to present?
We have more to go.
Sorry. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We just wanna see the projects, that's why.
Yeah. I know, I'm super excited.
I wanna see the polar bear that's not a polar bear. It's a bird.
The polar bear. Scientific name, Ursus smyrnumus. Classification, mammal. Polar bears eat many things. They eat many types of seals and fish. They also catch and eat beluga whales. In the summer months, they will eat berries, shellfish, mice, rats, and garbage. They will eat washed-up carcasses of walruses and also whales. They have also killed humans. Polar bears are usually found alone. Adult females can be seen taking care of their cubs. During breeding, males can be seen fighting with each other. During breeding, males can be seen fighting with each other. Polar bears do hibernate, but scientists call this a state of carnivore lethargy. They still have normal body functions and their temperature does not drop. Polar bears have wet feet. Female polar bears prefer to dig holes in old snow instead of fresh snow.
My name is Adrian Harris and I did the jaguar for my endangered species project. Name of animal. The jaguar is a big cat in the panther genus. The scientific name for this cat is the Panthera anka. The jaguar is a mammal. Behavior. Jaguars are very territorial. They live alone and mark their territory with their waste by clawing or by clawing trees. They hunt alone, mostly on the ground, but will climb a tree. Like most cats, the jaguar loves water. It swims, plays, bays, and hunts for fish in streams and pools. Like all big cats, the jaguar can roar. This roar sounds like a chesty cough. Endangered. Jaguars are endangered species due to the loss of habitat and by overhunting by men. They are hunted for their attractive fur. Farmers kill them because they kill their cattle. Hunting of jaguars are prohibited in Argentina, Belize, Colombia, Honduras, Nicaragua, and the United States. Interesting facts. There are fifteen thousand jaguars left in the world. This is why they are endangered species. Cubs are born with their eyes and ears closed.
They do what with their eyes closed? They hunt?
They're born.
They're born.
They're born. No wonder the people are beautiful.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Hi, I'm Julia Madsen and I did my endangered species project on the Arctic wolf. The common name of my animal is the Arctic wolf. Its scientific name is Canis lupus arcticus. The Arctic wolf is classified as a mammal. Behavior. The Arctic wolves' physical adaptability allows them to live in different climates and it is their behavioral adaptations that make them successful. Arctic wolves live in packs of five to seven wolves and they help each other get protection. Each pack has an alpha and omega wolf. In addition, wolves howl for many reasons, including family bonding, hunting, and communicating with other wolves outside the pack. Although all wolves will howl at the same key, they each have their own specific voice. Wolves have a good sense of sight, hearing, and smell and can travel at approximately five miles per hour for long periods of time while hunting or traveling within their territory. A wolf pack may spend eight to ten hours a day on the move. It may cover forty miles a day during winter hunts. Wolves can reach a top speed of forty miles per hour for short periods of time. Endangered. The reason why they are endangered is because of global warming. Arctic hares and musk oxen and some of their prey have lost their food sources due to global warming. With fewer of these animals to eat, Arctic wolves have smaller food sources, which has led to their endangerment. Fortunately, they are low concern and are not close to extinction. Also, industrial development threatens the Arctic wolves. The expansion of things such as roads, pipelines, and mines invade the Arctic wolf's natural territory and hinder upon their food supply and ability to catch prey. Arctic wolves are also wanted by hunters for their fine fur. The following are some interesting Arctic wolf facts. Arctic wolves are also referred as white or polar wolves. This type of wolf is identified as a subspecies of the gray wolf. Arctic wolves are usually smaller than gray wolves and also have smaller ears, slightly shorter muzzles, and shorter legs to reduce exposure to the cold air. And that is my project.
Thank you.
My name is Anne Marie Hadley Plant and for my endangered species project, I did the polar bear. Name of animal and classification. The name of my endangered animal is the polar bear, but its scientific name is the Ursus meritimus. It is classified as a mammal because it is a warm-blooded furry vertebrate. Endangered. Polar bears are endangered because of the massive gas and oil development is messing with their food source. Not only that, but the global warming is making an extreme impact on their habitat. Oxygen. Polar bears get their oxygen by breathing in through their nose and out through their mouth, just like humans. That is how polar bears obtain their basic needs. Two of the interesting facts about polar bears is that polar bears have been Coca-Cola's mascot since 1922. To hunt, polar bears slide on their bellies.
Did you draw your cover? Did you draw that?
I had help.
Very nice. Very nice.
My name is Olivia Paco and my presentation is on the Arctic fox. Name of animal. The Arctic fox is a mammal which lives in the Arctic tundra. The scientific name of the Arctic fox is Volpus lagopus. Its common name is the snow polar or white fox because of its white fur. Description. Arctic foxes start out brown as a pup. When they get older, they turn white. They turn brown again in warmer months. Their changing color helps to camouflage them from predators and prey. Arctic foxes can weigh six to twenty-one pounds and measure two to three point five feet in length. Their tails add next to twelve inches in length. They stand nine to twelve inches tall. The females tend to run smaller than the males. Why endangered? There are several hundred thousand Arctic foxes living in the world, but that is changing because of global warming. Global warming is changing the Arctic tundra. Arctic foxes from the south are moving into the warmer Arctic tundra for food. One of those animals is the red fox. The red fox eats the same kind of food as the Arctic fox, which means food is becoming more scarce. It is also a predator of the Arctic fox. Interesting facts. Arctic foxes have a great sense of hearing and smell. They use them to hunt their prey. They also have heavily pigmented eyes. This helps to protect their eyes from the sun and snow glare like sunglasses. Arctic foxes are able to survive the cold temperatures of the tundra because of their thick fur coats. They have one of the warmest coats of fur of all mammals. They can survive in temperatures as low as negative fifty degrees Celsius. They also have thickly padded paws, which allow them to walk over rocks, ice, and snow. They also make it easier to burrow into the snow to escape the harsh conditions of the tundra. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you.
My name is Jacob Scott and I did my project on a sifaka lemur. I did my project on a sifaka lemur. The scientific name for a sifaka lemur is a Propylacus canadus. A sifaka lemur is a mammal. A sifaka lemur eats fruit, flowers, leaves, bug, bark, and seeds. Sifaka lemurs spend most of their time in trees, but they don't get around the same way other lemurs do. Sifakas jump sideways on their two hind feet using their strong leg muscles. In a single jump, sifakas can jump up to thirty feet. Sifakas are named after an alarm call.
Hi, my name is Savannah Sharon and I did my project on the sperm whale. The name of my animal is the sperm whale. The scientific name is the Viceter macrophalus. The sperm whale is classified as a mammal. The sperm whale is the largest of all tooth whale species. When they are born, they weigh approximately one ton and are eleven to sixteen feet long. Adult males usually fifty to sixty feet, no, yeah, fifty to sixty feet long and weigh forty to fifty tons. Adult females are usually thirty-three to forty feet long and weigh fourteen to eighteen tons. They're usually dark brownish-gray with light spots, streaks, and scratches. When sperm whales come up to the surface, they blow twenty to seventy times before descending again. When they have to, they can swim at ten kilometers per hour or more, but if disturbed, they will go down to thirty kilometers per hour. Sperm whales migrate in groups called pods of fifteen to twenty whales. They migrate to find mates or because of weather. While migrating, they socialize. When they socialize, they make complex clicks called codas. Also while socializing, they will rub up against each other. Did you know that sperm whale puke is worth money? Yes. It actually is. This stuff can sometimes be worth more than gold.
Who collects it?
They use it for French perfumes.
Oh. Okay.
I wonder if they get some?
Sperm whale's teeth are banana-shaped and could be up to ten inches long.
And have you ever seen one of those?
No.
Have you?
No.
At the Roger Williams Zoo?
No, not at all. I don't even think there's one at the, what's the big zoo in San Diego with the whales and the sea world? I don't think there's one there either.
Well, I do apologize for jumping ahead of myself. I wanted to see them so quickly. But if we could take a couple minutes right now to check them out, that'd be great.
And you all did a lovely job.
Yes, very nice.
I don't think in fourth grade I could've come in front of you.
I don't know, they seem to have worked so well this year. I mean, I just point it out, I don't know. I just sit there and I listen to people.
It's crazy. Especially what's happening.
I'm driving home. Well, no, I said, so what you're saying is that every veteran, an alcoholic, a drug addict, or have severe mental...
Do they know what's aggressive when you say it?
Yeah.
It's not like it's like... It's crazy.
Yeah, have you driven on many trees? Have you walked many trees?
I know, I know, it's a problem, but it's the same five people.
Yeah, but you know what? I'll answer them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll engage them, you know? And except that idiot who I think is actually the guy who owns that ice cream place in Dollywood, that has all the Trump signs.
And was he behind the town collector there? Because he was giving them crap. And I was like, I'm going to go with the cops. He was bad, but it's not working.
You know, it's like, listen, it's like... You just do it next, you know, we just keep it, you know, keep it a discussion.
Suppose the name calling. Otherwise, you know, we may do that.
It is, it's nuts. It's like, you know, I'm a politician. That's what I do. I come here because we make so much money.
Oh, piss me off. I don't know about that. Listen, I have a freaking coma. I know about it, so.
It's polished everywhere. What do you want us to do? Come and hand you out flyers?
We're back in sixth grade.
Just want to... We'll be waiting. Just want to take a minute and thank all of the students for coming in and sharing such wonderful projects. I know I can speak for the entire committee that it's always nice to see students presenting. Also, I'd like to say thank you to Mrs. Warren for asking us to take part in such a wonderful event and giving the students an opportunity to present on TV and in front of us. So we appreciate it, and we want to thank you all for coming. Yeah, we were excited. I was too excited.
We were live tonight.
We were live, so.
We're still live.
Make sure you watch it, watch it on the TV. Thank you for coming.
Come back anytime.
Thanks, guys.
I didn't really look at it. I don't know. Budget homework? Is this part of the budget?
Your budget for that.
Budget homework, he's saying.
Top left is the numbers, John.
The day the crayons quit.
Other numbers?
Yeah, top left. Okay, next on the agenda is Consent Agenda A. Looking for a motion for Consent Agenda A. We have warrants, use of facilities, field trip request.
I have a question on the warrants. There's a $733 bill for Mr. Dogato. What is that for?
Do you have, who has the warrants?
I'm sorry, it's over here, it's right here. $736.58 cents. You know what that's for?
I don't, John.
It's for Gary H. DeAngelo.
Gary H. DeAngelo? First week of February, I guess. It says payroll. Saw payroll.
Yeah, no, he's one of our subs.
Substitutes. I'm just, do you, any other questions?
No, this person?
No, I don't. I was just, I just saw it, it was all by himself. I didn't know what that was for.
Was it out of district? Was it an out-of-district sub?
I'm sorry, Gary went from a long-term sub making so much per day to...
Permanent?
Contract B1.
That's why he's by himself.
Yes.
And probably had to make up the difference somehow?
Had to make up the difference, yes.
Thank you.
That's a great question.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I make a motion to...
Go for it.
Go for it.
Do we want to make one big motion?
Yeah.
Okay, go for it.
I make a motion to accept Consent Agenda A.
Motion made by Bill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to Report of the Superintendent.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. In your packet, there are two motions that, due to the snow days, we didn't get on the agenda. The first one is a motion to, in accordance with the Mass General Law 71, Section 47, to request a reimbursement be issued from the Student Activity Agency account to the Student Activities Checking Account in the amount of $24,039.77. And this is a standard motion that we make throughout the year as warranted.
So moved.
Second.
Are we able to do that if it didn't make the agenda on the open meeting laws?
I believe if it's...
Yeah, I think there's, the bottom of our agenda says, "Listen, the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair." So if we miss this due to the snow, there's...
And we have another one also.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah.
I just didn't...
I think I'll just claim her, yeah.
I just didn't think I'd catch all, but I just don't want to get... I don't have any problem with the money. I just don't want to follow the open meeting laws. And that general umbrella provision, in my estimation, doesn't really cover motions, especially monetary in nature, but up to you, all the furs of the chair.
Do this, the last meeting or the two meeting? This has been on...
The Activities Fund? Yeah. What's the pleasure of the committee? Do you want to make the motion?
Well, motions are already made and seconded, so we're not, we're just discussing.
Yeah. Any other discussion points? Okay, motion made by Bill, seconded by Jane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Just for point of clarification, just because it appeared on an old agenda doesn't necessarily comply with open...
No, I wondered, no, no, no. I wondered if it was the same. I thought it was like last week. I wondered if we didn't get to it. No, I wonder if we didn't get to it, and that's why we're getting to it. Like, I want to say it was on last, yeah, last meeting even.
Do we have to read this? I mean, you have it printed out longhand for a reason. Do we need to read that out?
Well, I mean, Alan read it, and I just said, "So moved."
Yeah, just because it wasn't on the agenda, I wanted to see it. Thank you. The second one is, this one relates to our roof projects. And the problem with this is we need to extend this by 60 days because of the lack of forthrightness from our owners' project managers, both at the high school and at the Millville Elementary School. So we are closing these projects out, and they will be at MSBA for final audit. This is a state house note in the amount of $946,857. And Unibank and our consultant recommended 60-days note on this, so it is payable on April 15th at an interest rate of .70% per annum. And this is to roll over our current state house note in the same amount for another 60 days to allow these projects to close and get to final audit. And the interest rate will be taken from the retainage that...
Retainage from the overall contract amount?
Contract amount.
Okay, so that's what's going to be my question to us.
It's not going to be picked up by us.
And the contractor's not disputing that?
We'll find out tomorrow, but I expect that we don't have an issue. We're closing this out at a meeting tomorrow. The Millville Elementary Project.
What about the high school?
That one is further ahead in the pipeline. But that is also going to MSBA for final audit.
But the portion of that, that we're charged interest, that... Is it the same contractor? Both?
Two separate ones.
Is that contractor picking up...
And I've let both owners' project managers know that, that because they have...
Delayed.
Delayed. And we are now in the process of closing these out, that any additional work and funding is not going to be charged to the owner.
But they haven't agreed to that yet.
They will. I've already told them. So this is something that we have to do because this was due February 15th. So we're making sure that we get this extended for 60 days so that we can close out these two projects.
I'm not quite sure I understand that.
So this particular motion is to extend the project for 60 days to make... The note?
Yeah.
To extend the note for 60 days?
Correct.
And make any, whatever conversations that you have with the person doing the project in Millville.
Owners' project managers.
Okay, so my...
On both projects.
I think my question is similar to John's, is what happens if they say, "I'm not going to pay for it"? That's my only question.
Then we have a discussion.
But we're not, if they say no, that's not something we're approving tonight. We're just approving it for 60 more days.
Yeah, but once we extend it for 60...
Yeah, but once we extend it, then the bill becomes ours.
Right.
Correct.
So we haven't, right.
But we also haven't issued final payment either.
I know, but doesn't that contract have an arbitration clause?
I don't believe so. I don't know that for sure. The other issue is that, in good faith, we've been asking them to bring, as owner-project manager, to bring this project to a close. And both of these have taken a while to do that. So this is something that we have to do as this amount needs to be extended so that we can close these two projects.
When you say "close the projects", you're just asking, "Are they done"?
Yes.
Both the projects are done?
Yes, and have been done for quite a while.
And so you're just closing out so you can bring it to Mass School Building Authority?
Yes, correct.
For their approval?
For them to do a final audit on the project and then complete it.
And what are you going to do with the additional interest for the 60 days?
That's the amount that we are charged.
Well, I understand that we're charged that, but what are you going to do with the money? I mean, the additional interest amount on that? Is that, when I say a rate of, is that 70%?
Point seven.
Point seven.
Per year. Seven tenths of one point per year.
What kind of money are we talking about for 60 days, you know?
On $946,000?
Yeah.
It would probably be around $7,000. 1% of a million? $10,000? Point seven.
Point seven times roughly a million.
That's per year, so it'd actually be, it would be...
All right, so what are we talking about?
It would be 2/12 of that.
Are we talking about $7,000?
Actually, 2/12 of $7,000, John.
Eight hundred and forty dollars?
Eight hundred and forty dollars.
All right.
Common core math.
It's been a long day. I'll make the motion.
$7,000 divided by 2/12.
Motion made by John, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. And then we just need a couple of signatures on those documents. Treasurer and secretary. The last one is on here, and that is the Food Service Staff. We have an awful lot of old equipment in all of our buildings that is either beyond useful life or not being used. And so our director, Jean Sheridan, has submitted this list that needs to be surplused. And again, there's a couple of items on here that she will look to sell, but we're not going to be needing any of the things on here. So it's a vote to surplus. And these are where the items were residing in all of our schools.
And the, I'm trying to think, we do this every year? Is it every year?
Well, whenever we have items that are old, it's like cleaning out the attic. And this is what we have that needs to be surplused in her recommendation.
So where will they go? We'll find somebody to come and just take them?
Yes, or if they are of any value, we will sell them.
Okay, we're looking for a motion to approve the food service surplus.
Equipment surplus?
Equipment, mhm.
Move to... Whatever you do to it, what do you do to it? You surplus the equipment.
Surplus the equipment.
Move to surplus the food service equipment.
Motion made by Jane, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I don't, I don't have a clue as to what we're voting on, so I'm just going to vote against it because I don't understand what we're voting for. We're going to surplus if we sell it. We're going to sell it, but if we don't, we don't. And then if we get money, we get money. If we don't, we don't get money. So I don't know what I'm voting for.
The large majority of the equipment here is beyond its useful life.
Or broken.
I understand, I understand all that, but you got a motion on equipment that we don't have a clue as to what's going to ultimately happen to the equipment. We're going to sell it, we're going to give it away, we're going to junk it, we're going to sell it for scrap. What happens to the funds that we receive from it? Where does it come? Where does it go? I, I, I just can't vote for it, that's all.
Well, this is the first step. First has to be declared surplus. The second stage is what do we then do with it?
Right.
So the first step is what we're doing tonight.
Right.
And then determine, is there any value? Do we have any takers for it? That's a whole second argument. But first has to be declared surplus.
No, I think that's not what I just understood to be said on the floor. What I think I understood to be said on the floor is once we vote, that's it. Those last, this committee's ever going to hear about this equipment, correct? Yes, no?
It's disposed of, surplus.
Okay. So there is no second vote. This is it. And I just don't know what "it" is. So in good conscience, I can't vote for it because I don't know what you're doing with this equipment.
We do this with books, right?
Yeah, books, we did it with chairs.
We did it with old furniture, old chairs.
Last year, I think we did it. I think I said, "Hey, why don't we send them to Haiti or something?"
Yeah.
And I think we tossed too much money to go there or whatnot.
It's more expensive to ship than its value.
I said, "Why don't we call a bill in Blackstone and see if we could get surplus money for the paper?"
Oh, right.
And a recycling center. But apparently, we didn't do that either. So I'm just, I just don't want to vote for something. I, if you don't need us to do it, then I don't want to vote for it, I guess. That's my position.
Is there a motion?
Motion, second's already on there. So we're discussing now. So, I mean, John can vote, no, that's fine. It's okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, all the...
I mean, do we make this, like, I mean, this is public document, so if somebody had a need, they certainly could approach you and say...
Step up and claim if they had a use for it, right?
Like a blast chiller. I don't even know what a blast chiller is. But hey, I've seen it on TV in a food show.
It is in the mine before they do something with it? Do they have a plan? Once we say yes, you can dispose of it, sell it?
Right.
Do they have, do they do it in 30 days? Is there any kind of a timeframe?
No, it's the food service director's sole discretion.
But I do think, I think John's point is a good one because we can always say, because, I mean, the district goes through audits all the time. And the reality is, some of this stuff is part of that, whether, how deep they go into it. But I do think we can ask, because it is a good question about last year, what is the report on the surplus stuff we did last year? What do we get for it? Where'd it go? And it could just be, well, free, free, and people just came and took it, you know, the chair, you know? So I think, again, to Steve's point, we're declaring it surplus. And then I think we can ask in six months, saying, "Is there any updates on the surplus"? I think it probably should be a regular part of...
Yeah, I agree.
Our follow-through.
Ask the food service director to come in and explain.
I don't want to be put in a position where we're putting people in awkward positions where somebody, and they will say, you know, "That was his cousin who took the ice machine", or, you know, "You didn't pay a whole lot for that. Well, it was junk", and we get in an argument whether it was junk or whether it had value. I don't want to do that. I mean, and then if we do get audited, I don't want my name on it.
Mhm.
So unless you got more, and then you're right, it's only this one list of equipment, then it was the books, then it was the other furniture. But when you take it all together, it's taxpayers' assets.
So can you...
If you're going to liquidate them, you should at least tell them how you're going to liquidate it. And if you're going to liquidate it by selling it, then you ought to be fair and hold it up to public auction. Just a thought.
So would it be fair to say that when we do approve a surplus, that we do look for, you know, a couple months in, what the update is on where that went? Whether you're talking textbooks or whether you're talking...
Whatever it is.
Anything, anytime it moves to surplus, that we need to, you know, down the road, we need a list of what happened to them?
Yep.
So does anybody else have any discussion? Okay, a motion's been made to move the food service equipment to surplus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Moving on to the FY17 preliminary budget.
And we can definitely follow it.
Thank you.
I'm just going to get up to the podium because we do have it on the screen, what you have in your packets. So we'll begin by going through this. So this is a preliminary budget for FY17. And this was worked on by the leadership team and staff and looking at... And this was, um, worked on by the leadership team and staff, and looking at what the need was for, um, the district for next year. There is a bit of a narrative. I've listed the accomplishments that we have this year, the drivers for this budget, looking at the increases and what's coming next. We have a lot of challenges this year because there are, it seems more unknowns than knowns, um, in front of us. We do know that, um, our, both of our, our regular transportation is up for bid at the end of this year. We also have some potential offsets in our special ed transportation. We are in the midst of negotiating a unit A contract with the teachers. And we also are absorbing, uh, some, um, funding around special education and ELL, our English language learners, that has had no, um, funding from the state or the federal government. We also know our health insurance renewal is in front of us, uh, over the next four or five weeks, and we also don't know what that will come in at. So a lot of this is preliminary. Over the next couple of weeks, we will refine this, and as we move forward through the month of March, um, as we get to the adoption hearing, we will have, um, a clearer picture. At the federal level, they finally reauthorized, uh, the fifty-year-old law that governs us, the ESEA, Elementary Secondary Education Act. But they did not address the funding requirements around, uh, special education with IDEA. And as we have seen from what is happening, um, in the, um, the primaries leading up to them, there's not a whole lot of discussion on public education. This year, the federal share of our budget was down to three percent, and that looks like it's not going to increase. The state has moved towards another assessment to replace MCAS that will ultimately require more technology. The Foundation Budget Review Commission, the FBRC, has given their report, and that initial, um, report addresses the two largest, most volatile areas of any school budget, um, special education and health insurance. Governor Baker has said that, uh, Chapter Seventy would increase by the amount of the state revenue, uh, increase, which has been announced at four point three percent. However, the initial governor's budget increases Chapter Seventy, which is our primary funding source from the state, at only one point seven percent. So the inequities also around circuit breaker and regional transportation have not been addressed as well. The amount of the increase for Chapter Seventy statewide, uh, did not match the amount that was earmarked for vocational programs. The no new tax pledge has certainly so far been held. However, um, the state's economy is increasing, uh, revenue and improving, estimated for next year to be about a billion dollars. However, this is offset by, um, fixed costs, including the, um, early retirement pension payout, uh, the cost of healthcare and debt service, um, to be pegged at about one point five billion dollars. So it does not appear that there is, um, additional funding, uh, through revenue at the state level. In two thousand, healthcare, health insurance funding, um, cost the state about twenty percent of its budget. And, uh, last year, it was up to about forty percent of the state budget. So that means obviously that a lot of other, uh, line items within the state budget, um, do not experience growth and/or are cut. Our Chapter Seventy funding has remained relatively flat for the last several years. We don't look to see that that is going to address, um, any of the requirements that the Foundation Budget Review Commission has pointed out. If we took the foundation budget, which was put into place with ed reform in nineteen ninety-three, um, it would require an additional two billion dollars plus just to meet, um, the, um, amounts for two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. And this foundation budget was based on metrics from nineteen ninety-three. So, um, it is definitely, um, at the state level, uh, needs to be, um, needs to be looked at in order to, uh, carry their fair share. It looks like all of this simply means that the state and federal government's share of the pie will not be increasing, and therefore it simply means that more pressure is put on the local budgets. We have accomplished much over the last year. We are in the midst of a wireless project that, um, will be completed on time, which will extend our wireless coverage and, uh, capabilities throughout every square foot of all of our schools, um, which will, um, put us in, um, good situation to take advantage of, uh, the increased use of technology throughout the district. We have implemented our K-5 Math Series, um, in visions, which, um, will be successfully aligning what our kids need to learn in the sequence that they need to learn it. We experienced a successful accreditation visit by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And our high school, um, is once again a level-one high school. And that is a significant accomplishment, uh, with the seven metrics that they are judged by. There's only twenty-six percent of the schools in the Commonwealth last year that attained a level-one accountability status. And, um, our students and our, our staff deserve a great commendation for the work that they do. Uh, we are building in-district programs for special education with the anticipation to provide our needier students with the least restrictive environment. It has been a growth year, um, and we look for that to, uh, continue to, um, alleviate the necessity for some of our students to be placed in more costly out-of-district programs. Along with our, part of our technology plan, we are rolling out Google School, which, uh, is to, a tremendous value for both teachers and students, um, and provides a solid platform for all. Thanks to the Blackstone Board of Selectmen and Blackstone Cable, uh, we were awarded sixty thousand dollars to put a studio in at the high school. That will be huge for our students, to allow them to, um, to take advantage of all that goes into TV production. And, uh, thanks to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, we also completed the initial facility study of both the high school and, uh, John F. Kennedy Elementary, along with AFM. And it is no secret that we have to address the needs of that infrastructure, um, in the near future. We have many drivers that are around how we develop this budget. We know that we need to continue professional development. It is the key to improving our instruction. We are updating our math curriculum. Next, um, is the plan to, uh, bridge the gap between elementary and the high school by looking at the middle school math curriculum. We continue to replace textbooks. Uh, we know that our technology infrastructure continues to need updating so that we can match the needs of our future capacity, um, the ability to collect data requirements for the state, as well as our, uh, assessments, which, uh, right now are moving in the direction of the park testing. Technology needs that are increasing with the wireless devices that we are planning to roll out. Uh, we are looking at the STARS Assessment that we piloted this year with great success, which allows our teachers, um, immediate, um, access to how their students are achieving and provides them with tools to, um, differentiate and increase their instruction as students require it. We look at continued special education costs and a rapid increase in our English language learners, um, as we have, um, inherited a huge number of students over the last eighteen months. And that law, um, doesn't give us, uh, any wiggle room, and it requires a lot of, uh, specialized funding as we have added another teacher mid-year this year. Social and emotional needs of, of our students, uh, continue to become more and more complex. Anxiety across all age levels is now between twenty-five and thirty percent of all students. It can move to depression and a whole host of other, uh, issues that don't allow all students to engage in their education. Uh, we need to provide additional support, um, to allow all of our students to be successful. We know that about fifteen percent of our students in our towns choose to go outside the district. And while that number has held steady for the last several years, um, it continues to be a burden on, um, the bottom line as the total education pie gets sliced, um, differently between, um, the other, um, public education opportunities. And, uh, we have certainly, uh, decided, and we continue to move forward, um, making our district, um, the best that it can be for all of our students. So that parents and students in the younger grades know that they can stay here, be successful, and be ready for college or career. We looked at, um, additional positions that we need. The kindergarten aides, which had been cut in years past, are now, um, restored to four and a half hours a day. In order to take them full-time, that would be approximately forty thousand dollars. We have two, uh, full-time, uh, technologists who are flat-out. And most districts have five or six people doing this work, um, and we do need another, uh, network technician, um, full-time. As we are moving to add more technology in order for our students to keep pace and, and be ready, uh, for life after they graduate. An additional high school science teacher would allow us to offer coding, which is in demand. It would allow us to, uh, increase our AP courses with the, um, addition of AP Statistics and AP Computer Science. Um, we see that as, as differentiators and allowing us to be more, um, competitive and offer more rigor, uh, for our students. When they leave us and they go to college, every course is an AP course. And so to allow them, students who may not think of themselves as advanced placement students, to try an AP course and to try something that they may think they like is a huge benefit. Because colleges are no longer concerned with the, the courses that you take to get a high GPA or in, to increase your class rank. What they are concerned with is the type of courses you studied and took and the rigor of those courses. We also, uh, will be, uh, cited again on our accreditation visit for not having a library media center specialist. And that person, um, at the high school level, um, needs to be certified and needs to understand how to integrate technology for teachers and across the curriculum. The additional three, uh, teachers, one in each elementary school, would allow us to change our scheduling, to give our teachers time to collaborate and to have professional learning time during the day. Also along those lines, playground monitors in each school, um, in each elementary school would take that duty away from the teachers and allow them during the day to work together, to collaborate, especially as the needs of our students continue to grow.
Question?
Sure.
So those elementary, those are the, um, reading specialist positions?
Well, it would allow the reading specialists to be reading specialists, and it would also give another staff member to be able to, yes.
I was thinking the same thing, is, is to restore those reading specialists to what they really are?
Exactly.
So that, so that our reading can improve.
Uh, the new staff number, along with, um, an average for health insurance benefits, would be four hundred and thirty-three thousand. The curriculum additional, uh, along with our textbooks, would be a hundred and twenty-six thousand. Technology primarily around maintaining and, um, and keeping our smart boards working along with Chromebooks for three grades and the accompanying software to manage them would be two hundred thousand. We do have four staff that are out on long-term, uh, leaves, and the anticipation that they return would add another hundred and twenty thousand. We think that a wheelchair van would be a wise investment, um, although we, we do need to investigate the leasing of that compared to the buying of it, uh, because we anticipate, um, using it for, uh, several of our students over the next eight or ten years. And that would minimize and reduce our costs, uh, to other vendors. Special education, we mentioned the social and emotional, um, along with some of the learning disabilities that are presenting, uh, at an earlier age and with more complexity. The cost of special education continues to rise and continues not to be addressed by the federal government. And when the ID, Jane?
Does that, that dollar amount include, um, the request that was brought to us for the curriculum? The one-eighty?
Yes, yes.
Reading one-eighty? Thank you, yeah.
All-around special ed, yes, that's in there. Right, read one-eighty. The, um, the IDEA, which was, um, a, a federal mandate in the mid-seventies, the federal government was supposed to fund that at forty percent. And in the thirty-five years of that law, forty years of that law, it has never been funded more than twenty or twenty-one percent. And that is unconscionable, that we haven't been able to put pressure on the federal government to cover special education and do what they said they would do.
Can I just ask a question? Um, the technology, I remember that, um, uh, Mr. Judac coming and, um, on his, on his presentation, he asked for the department head Chromebooks, is that included in that as well? Or is it just the three grades and the software?
Yes and no. Uh, what we did when we combed through the budget is if we're going to be bringing, and we were looking at Chromebooks for eighth graders, ninth graders, and tenth graders, uh, reducing the department requests.
Okay.
So adding two more carts at the high school, because you're gonna have half the school walking around with Chromebooks, and redistributing those Chromebooks to, uh, another one to the complex, so they would have two, one to MES, so they would have one, and another one at the middle school. So the five that they were asked, asking for, two would be, remain at the high school to share, and three would be pushed down into the elementary and middle schools.
Okay, so just, just to sum it up, eight, nine, and ten would be every, one to one?
One to one, yep.
And then two carts for the high school to satisfy the, the, the other grades using Chromebooks?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, um, an additional one at JFK, so that would be a Chromebook cart of thirty for roughly?
So they would have two, two carts.
For six hundred kids, okay? And then in Millville? No, it is, it is. I just, I, for, for people listening, I just wanna make that, you know, clear. And then for Millville, it's one, one cart, and this would be their first cart, right?
Yeah. Well, with the, with the wireless project, they could actually, will be able to use one as of the spring. Previously, they could not because they did not have the wireless capacity to do anything with them.
And then one more for Hartman.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then to sort of follow up on that, what do you foresee as, like, the year after that, year after that? I'm thinking the Chromebooks.
I would like to be adding, you know, another two the year after. The eighth graders would take those Chromebooks to the high schools, you add another eighth grade.
It would have nine, ten, eleven, then it'd start with eight, so in a couple years, it would be eight through twelve.
Then maybe seven and eight next year, so that you would have them moving all the way up through.
And, and do you find that once this initiative gets moving, it's just a, it's a cycle?
Yeah, I mean, you get to a point where, if they've had them for theoretically seven years, they've pretty much lived their life at that point. So you try to recycle some, and you use that to buy some more, so the price drops a little bit. I mean, at the rate we are now, they will soon be at that price point of VCRs and DVDs. When they first came out, they'll be below two hundred dollars in the next year or so. So you're getting to that point where people are gonna start having them anyways.
But this is the big cost, because this is the first time that we're implementing this, and then year after year, the price won't be as much as it is now because we need to implement this.
Right.
Okay.
And you've got, and you've got a couple of things coming forward. I mean, it, you know, if the state government has, you know, if, if they're doing what they're saying they're doing, they have online testing, we, we need to have these devices in the school in order to do, you know, two thousand and nineteen, they want it all to be online. You gotta have?
We have to support that.
If we were doing that, we could not possibly. If we were doing that, we could not possibly test the students in the school. So, in all the schools. So we would have to contract someone to bring Chromebooks in, which is basic, or whatever, bring computers in, which would just be throwing money away because you would only be using them. And the reality is if we're not teaching and using them, you've heard me say this before, students are not using them in their everyday learning and how they produce products in the classroom, then it's not, you're not going to see the same results on the test. And that has been consistent. Schools that use technology are seeing reasonable results on these online tests. Schools that do not, it's a foreign monster and students do not perform well. And if we're going to use that as a graduation requirement, we want them performing at their peak so that when we get them there, we have them ready.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm glad to hear that because I was at a meeting this week and they said twenty-nineteen is when Park is going to be online. And just so people know, we will be there in terms of broadband, things like that. So we just need the devices, we need the machines. So I'm glad to hear that you're, we're headed down that road, and it sounds like we'll be there by twenty-nineteen.
Yep.
Great.
I want to back up again too, since we just backed up to technology. The new staff piece, I assume that's everybody that was kind of listed in the previous slide?
Right, and fifty thousand dollars for benefits added in.
Now it adds up. Now my Catholic school...
And again, and again, that's, that's a placeholder, strictly a placeholder.
Sure, yeah, 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 got that.
As we, as we continue through here, this is a big number, and it seems almost like déjà vu because last year we had a similar big number. We also know that we probably will not be able to approximate this, but I also believe that as we go through the budget process, we will have offsets that we don't know about or are unclear right now that we'll be able to, to lower this number. We also have known contractual obligations, we have unknown contractual obligations, which we really can't discuss now likewise with our health insurance as we are negotiating that as well. So we will find a way to get there, but I wanted to at least bring this to the, before the committee. We have a couple of weeks to digest this and then move forward with a public hearing two weeks from tonight. What I wanted to do here was, we just looked at a brief budget history, and you can see the operating budget, how it has dipped and then regained its footing. With a one-point, one-point-seven-five percent yearly increase, knowing what the incremental increases would be would allow us to plan. And while you can't predict year to year, it's just illustrative of the fact that it does get us there in a gradual way. You can see the E and D, the excess and deficiency funds that we have used over the years. And there again, just as an FYI, if we, we know we need to look at our buildings and we need to look at them soon, the cost to borrow for that improvement is directly tied in to how much we have in E and D. So we really don't want to drain that account, although we have, the committee has been very supportive of augmenting the budget with that monies. As you can see there, the town assessments have grown and have, have, you know, kept pace. Chapter seventy has been relatively flat. Here you can see the ten-year lookback, and obviously we had rough years in two thousand ten, eleven, and twelve. And you can see the student enrollment as well. And certainly, we know that the demographic has changed. We have smaller families, we have a declining birth rate. However, we also know that we have fifteen percent of students who choose to go and continue their education outside the district. We have an awful lot of unknowns right now, but we do know that...
Can I go back one slide, Alan? I'm sorry. So FYO nine, ten, and eleven, those years where we were cutting like crazy and not really making par, I need to point out to everybody and at home too, that's when we had the most people vacating, students vacating. So there's a direct correlation between when we cut and reduce our services, more kids leave. Am I, am I reading that the right way?
Well, that certainly is apparent from this. And I base it just on talking to parents, you know, who have had their oldest graduating in oh-eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and their youngest now graduating, and they, they tell us of, of the changes that they see. We know that we will never be able to be all things to all people, but we have to focus on what we do best. And certainly, the rigor of curriculum, offering the right courses, challenging courses, augmenting a terrific music program with a suite of, of other extracurriculars from athletics to clubs, and the opportunity to have a full working TV studio, I think is huge. And all of those things, we have a senior class that is just phenomenal to engage with. And they, and they really stress the fact that we need to engage the community and engage our younger students in grades three, four, and five. And we're looking at ways, Mr. Doudak and Mr. Cameron and the elementary principals are looking at ways to engage our younger students with our older students. And so they get comfortable with, with the, with the idea of continuing all, through all twelve years. But I think, you know, the reality of it is that, is that our budget grew by a little less than half a million last year at two-point-two percent. You know, we, we, we know that we have constraints, but we also know that the committee needs to advocate a budget before the town meetings that is realistic and fills the, the basic needs as we go forward. So as I, as I mentioned, we have an awful lot of unknowns. It seems more unknowns than knowns right now. We do know that our, our fixed costs with utilities looks to be trending in the right direction, as most of us see at home. Our per usage is, is lower, and if we can maintain, hopefully relatively few snow days, we should be in pretty good shape. We know that we do have declining enrollment. We are working to outreach with, with everybody to invite them in, to understand what we have to offer. We also know that the two biggest needs for our existing infrastructure are at JFK and to a degree AFM, and also at the high school. And, you know, it's only a matter of time before this building becomes twenty and twenty-five years old. And Millville Elementary, while in terrific shape for the age of that building, that opened in nineteen ninety-two, and it is in phenomenal shape, there are a lot of infrastructure issues that we're going to have to address there as well. So all of that needs to be a part of the plan along with the classroom, the teaching and the learning. And, you know, that's going to be key for us to address.
Question.
Yeah, I, Millville, you mentioned it, will be required to address these infrastructure issues with regard to Millville Elementary, but is it, is it our responsibility for the district to address those, or is it the municipality that owns the building?
Yeah, it certainly needs to be communicated. Anything over twenty thousand dollars becomes, I believe, the, both municipalities are on the hook for the capital cost, the capital improvements.
Or their own buildings.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, John. And that's important because rather than, you know, we look at the high school where we have just aging infrastructure and things breaking on a, on a daily basis that we need to address long-term. We need to be in front of that, you know, in our other buildings as they age, just so it's, so that we can plan and that the towns can plan for those capital expenditures. We need to...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The twenty thousand dollars that you keep referring to, is it twenty thousand dollars per building that we're...
I believe it's, I believe it's any capital cost, whether it's, if it's paving a parking lot, that's twenty-eight thousand dollars.
It's per event, really.
But it's per event. It's, it's anything that hits the threshold, I believe.
Well, it, it's both, each, you're right, John. Each of the town owns one of the, one of the buildings.
Right.
The complex and the, and Millville Elementary. So each of the towns, as the regional agreement says, is that any capital cost under twenty thousand is the district. Anything over twenty thousand is them.
But I, I believe, Bill, just from a cost perspective, that somebody, at least I think Millville's interpreting it to almost mean a twenty thousand dollar deductible with regard to capital expenditures.
I don't think so.
No, I, I, I'm telling you right now that they are because we have, we have the most blatant example of that when they were talking about building that playground. And I know they, Millville Board of Selectmen said that we'd be on the hook for the first twenty thousand. If, you know, they were, they're, let's, I'm just using it as an example. I understand they were going to get donations and everything, okay? I'm just using it as the example that we're all aware of because it happened. They said that we'd be on the hook for the first twenty thousand.
If it was damaged.
No, 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 no.
Not to build the playground.
No, no.
It's being done by donations and fundraisers.
Right. For repair, if there were a repair cost.
Stop, because I want to try to make an, I want to try to use it as an example, okay? Forget the donations and contributions. Let's pretend that Millville is going to build a playground, okay? That was what was brought to the Millville Board of Selectmen. Millville Board of Selectmen responded by saying that the first twenty thousand dollars would be paid for by the district. They weren't considering the donations and contributions. So based upon that fact, I believe at least one municipality sees that capital contribution, that twenty thousand dollars, as almost being a deductible, being paid by the district with regard to any capital expenditures.
Yeah, I remember it as, as Jane did, that it was, if it was, if it was maintenance and repairs that came up down the road.
When, well, let me just, let me go back to the history of the playground a little bit.
No, you're misunderstanding because I'm talking about contributions.
Hang on, hang on.
Talking about...
I'm asking you to listen now.
I know there's contributions. I know that we're talking about, you know what, it's, we're just going to always, forget it, I'll withdraw it, you know, because what you're doing here is, I'm trying to make an example of one particular instance where we're aware that the Board of Selectmen from a municipality said that we're on the hook for the first twenty thousand. You're going to cloud that with donations and contributions.
No, actually, I'm not. But I, but I believe you're incorrect. I don't believe they said we were on the hook for the first twenty thousand to fund the playground. In their contract that, in their, that they tried to write up with us, they were concerned that if the town, if this group of people that wanted to build the playground built it through a town agency, that the town would then be responsible for long-term repair because we came into the issue of the, of the Blackstone Playground and who repairs it when it needs to be repaired. And so in the basis of repairing the playground, not purchasing one, but repairing one, the school would be responsible for any maintenance of the playground unless it went beyond that twenty thousand dollar threshold.
With all due respect, you're both wrong. I watched the meeting. I know what they were talking about. They're pretty clear that the town of Millville said that any initial expenditure with respect to the building, a capital expenditure, the twenty thousand dollars would have to be paid by the district first before they'd fund the additional repairs. So if you needed doors and windows for Millville Elementary, they would look to the district first. If they needed flooring, they would look to the district first. If they needed siding, they would look to the district first. The only distinction, and I tried to use that as an example, but let's look at things that don't have contributions and donations. So the way the Board of Selectmen from the town of Millville approaches this and views it is that the first twenty thousand dollars of any capital expenditure or any capital project will come first from the district, and then the remaining balance will come from the municipality.
Right. I mean, I think, and I think your point is, I don't care what, how they interpret it, this committee interprets it. And the only example I can give, John, is a couple of years ago, we had, we were getting quotes to replace the flooring in the kitchen in Millville. And our quote was like thirty grand. And we said, "It's yours." And they said, "Well, our quote says nineteen thousand." And we, we went back and forth with exchanges, okay? But our interpretation, which quite frankly is all that matters, okay? It's not a twenty thousand dollar deductible, okay? If it's an expense, it's over twenty thousand, it is their total responsibility. And I'll say it on camera, live, anywhere we want to go.
Good, I'm glad to hear that, Bill, because that was what, that I was unaware of. I was unaware that they tried to say, so as long as the overall cost, so if it's thirty thousand dollars, we don't pay the first twenty first?
It's their expense.
It has to be twenty or less?
Yes.
Okay. And you've already stood by that?
Yeah, with the, with the floor in Millville and the kitchen.
Yeah, they put a new kitchen floor there. So, so obviously the goal is to make projects that are under twenty thousand dollars, is what they're, they're trying to do.
And their goal is to make it under, but that's fine, and that's fine. But I think the, the only, only interpretation that matters as far as I'm concerned is this board's, and we have precedent to go with that. So it's a great point that you're bringing up.
I just don't want them to take and segregate and say, "Okay, we're only going to do four windows, so it keeps it under twenty grand." But that's, that's neither here nor there. All right, that's, that's fine.
So to continue and to finish up, we have the unknowns. As we go forward, we need to continue over the next several weeks to refine this budget and to talk about what should be included and what we can maybe offset. And as these assumptions become known, that will give us a much clearer picture of the total need. The public hearing is scheduled for two weeks from tonight, February twenty-fifth, right here at seven o'clock. I can't stress enough the infrastructure needs at AFM and JFK as well as the high school because those buildings are in, in need. And then by doing that, I believe, and along with what we have planned for our technology and our curriculum, that will be getting, along with offering a TV studio, will hopefully attract students to stay with us.
Can I, another question? Can I ask you, what part of this budget, do you have any allocation within the budget to actually market our music and arts program, which is, you know, pretty unique and has an extraordinarily high level? Do you have anything in the budget that actually does that or any kind of plan or program that does that? I mean, other than just the, by word of mouth, you know, people getting to know that we have a strong music and arts program?
That is a terrific question, and certainly, in, in this budget that's here, there is nothing itemized for marketing for, for that specific intent. We have, we are talking about ways that we can get that word out, and, and a lot of it is, is word of mouth. And, and folks that's, that start to see the amount of dollars that our seniors are going to receive in financial aid. And, but to your point, there's not a specific line item in the budget.
Is there, is, but is it, do we already have something that's contained in this budget that was pre-existing? You know, press agents and media releases, anything like that?
No.
So it's just, I mean, first of all, we get zero coverage from a socket call, so let's just toss that out. But like the Worcester Gazette and newspapers that'll cover more of a general area, is there anything within this budget, any person within our, our district that has as one of their tasks, you know?
PR, for lack of a better term.
PR or...
Media relations?
Media relations?
No.
And you obviously don't do that.
We, we, we have piecemealed it for sure. Absolutely.
But I do think that once we have a studio and once we have, because what you're talking about is branding, and, and we desperately need it. Other schools, really successful schools have people that are out there, it's their primary job to go out and brand and put it. And I do think that once we have the TV studio and we really use cable money every single year, I think it's gonna, part of that's going to be in there. You know, I, I, I have to believe that, you know.
What does Valley Tech do? Because, I mean, they've got an incredible...
They have a full-time person that does that. That, that, it's total PR. And they, they, they go after grants, they go after all the media, they have a writer, you know, that goes out, and it's, and it's, it's great.
Can I just jump in? I've been on the committee for a while, and Lusperance used to be on the committee. One of her big nags, if you want to call that, she got after every principal. She wanted at least one article in the newspaper every month from every principal. And she was hounding them, and that's, and now you can see why. That's sort of dropped in the last several years, but that was truly Ann's crusade.
But I think nowadays with social media and with branding, I mean, there's so many ways to do it.
Maybe it's evolved to that, but you're right.
But, but Bill, somebody, same idea. And we do have the, the Facebook page that I've seen and the like and the band, but there's no cohesive type of, but I, just to get back to one of Bill's points, Alan, I know it's just step down, so I just want to see if, is it possible for you to take these numbers and correlate the loss of, the loss of enrollment, loss of students, I don't mean just based on population, I mean, kids going to other schools and the like, the cost of... the cost of that, the actual dollar cost to the district, and the budget for that year? Can you do that for this similar period? I think that would be instructive to people.
The cost of a student going elsewhere is not a cost to the school district in our budget, it's a cost to the towns.
Correct. Correct. In, in total education, yes.
We lose the funding, the per-head funding of a student going somewhere else. That's gone. We don't have that. But yeah, the town, for specific things, have to go, town has to go and put the bill for a BBT or an AGI or anywhere else, you know? But I think our loss, what John's talking about is, we lose, for lack of a better word, that counting of that head in our district. And that's money. That's, that's significant money.
We can define that, because there is a net loss just on school choice to other publics. You know, we, we have 40 or so students who choice in, a lot of them to take advantage of the music program. But we also have over 80 that choice out. We also have a, a larger amount of students who are homeschooled. We have a significant number that go to other private schools for a lot of different reasons. We, we've had a, we've seen a huge uptick in Norfolk Agricultural. And that funding, the towns get killed on that funding. Both the price and the way it's, it's billed. And, you know, that, again, the state doesn't have the, the appetite to, to address the deficit in public district, public education funding. They, they are looking at lifting the charter cap and supporting charter schools. They're looking at, at other areas, but their funding is, is such a, over 40% of the state's budget is in healthcare and health insurance. And so, while the federal government has said, "Okay, you guys don't want us to call it Common Core, you define it, your frameworks, your standards, so have at it." States then get to, get to cover that, that cost. And in this current year, I mentioned 3% is federal-funded in our total sources and uses of all funds. The state's at 49%, the towns pick up now 48% of our total, of our total of, of just under 23 million. And if the state's not going to step up, that's going to put tremendous burden on, on standalone public districts like us. And they, so far, the current administration has chosen not to respond to all of the work that was done by the Foundation Budget Review Commission last year. And that, those numbers haven't changed a whole lot since 2007, when I sat on a statewide Chapter 70 review. And if you're going to continue to fund based upon metrics from 1993, which were probably developed in '91 and '92, well, we know that our teacher salaries have gone up, our health insurance has gone up, the cost of, of, of special education has gone up. And there's not much that has stayed the same or gone down for any of us. And so, that Foundation Budget Review Commission, who came up with those two big volatile numbers in, in school budgets of health insurance costs and special education, the state's going to have to address that. Or punt it back to the federal government. And say, "Feds, you told us you were going to fund IDEA that covers our students with disabilities at 40%. You've never come close." And that is a shame, that no one wants to hold anyone's feet to the fire, and that nobody elected wants to look at it. And so, those dollars only continue to grow at the state and local level. And while the state has Circuit Breaker, which is a formula that helps us offset our costs over four times foundation going outbound, this current administration has kept that number flat. So, there's a lot of work to be done. And there's a lot of good work being done by school committees all over the state to, to raise that as a, as a concern. I think the bottom line is that the state doesn't have the, the, enough funding to be able to support that additional, additional work. So, it's going to be, it's going to be an interesting challenge as we go forward. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Curriculum update?
Yes, just real quick, a couple of things. We are looking and have arranged to do a pilot of the STARS 360 Assessment System. In each building, it will be 60 students for 60 days. It's a free pilot, but it will give our data team and a couple of other teachers some experience with that assessment system, so they can give us some information as to what is useful, what is not useful. We have been receiving materials for piloting a, the first round of a middle school math program, which is in the budget. And I'm hoping to start that the middle of, of March. And just a quick announcement for all those folks at home, that our next Professional Development Day is Friday, March 11th. So parents should consider that. That's about three weeks away, three, three weeks away, four weeks away, so. That's about it.
I just have one question. I'm just looking for clarity on the difference between the READ 180 and the STARS.
Okay, that's a really good question.
I'm just, I'm just wondering.
Are we duplicating our calls?
Are we duplicating? Exactly.
No. READ 180 is a Tier 3 targeted assistance for reading decoding, reading comprehension, okay? STARS is, is an assessment system that assesses student progress towards the standards and gives, but, gives, you know, ways to, to move kids forward towards the standards. But the READ 180 and System 44 is very specific to, to address learning deficiencies in the area of reading.
So it's just reading?
It's more, it's more synonymous to a Wilson reading method, or a Lynda Mood Bell sort of approach. A very therapeutic, systematic, phonetic approach to teaching reading.
Okay.
For students who do not have difficulty with that particular type of learning.
So the, the difference is, the STARS program will assess a student and, and get them to the level at which you need to teach them. Whereas the READ 180 is a program where you will consistently use on a daily basis, like Wilson, if they have reading struggles. So it'll be a program that's not getting them to where they are academically, it's to improve their reading, so you do it, you would do it.
The one's an assessment and one's a curriculum tool.
Right. STARS, STARS is a assessment that then gives teachers information as to where students are strong and weak, and gives them strategies to meet deficiencies and maximize strengths. System, READ 180 is a targeted instructional program for students with disabilities or, or difficulties. You know, you can use it with students who might not have a difficulty, but it's more like a Wilson or a Lynda Mood Bell. It's a specific therapeutic instructional approach.
And it's different than Fundations?
Fundations is, is just an assessment that groups kids into, into reads. Yeah. I mean, you use that to assess their reading level and then use that to inform your instruction. But it's not systematic approach to phonetic awareness and decoding.
It's, it's done by Wilson, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's the next generation of Wilson.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And it's, it's a curriculum that's used daily, right? Am I wrong?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
But the READ 180 is. You know what, I'm, I'm confusing Fontes and Pennell with Fundations.
Yeah, that's an assessment, but Fundations has pretty much taken the place of Wilson. So that's why I'm still wondering that same question is.
Well, and that's, and that's part of, that's part of the reason for doing the pilot with STARS 360 is, you know, do we use it in kindergarten? Do we use it in first grade? Do we use it in second grade? So that's, that's part of collecting some data and having people put some hands on it.
And so, those 60 students for the 60 days, is that particular school that you're going to look at, or grade level that you're going to look at?
It is every single school.
Identified students or?
There's 60 students for 60 days in each building.
Oh, oh, oh.
Sorry.
Oh, there's 60, okay.
It's 60 at MDS, there's 60 at AFM, there's 60 at JFK, there's 60 at the middle school, and there's 60 at the high school, and people's.
You're just randomly picking them?
Uh, no, well, I've, no, that, we met with the data team, the data team is probably going to be at least one of those teachers. And then we're getting one other teacher to partake. For the middle school, they've had the bargain basement STARS, so they're getting access to kind of all the other bells and whistles.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Public forum?
Time to come up. You have any questions or comments?
Do you have the results? Feedback from that as we go through this process or not till the end of the year?
Probably, for the, for the STARS pilot, probably in May, I would imagine.
School committee forum?
Jane, did it, did they, did you say it loud enough so they could, folks could hear that at home?
Oh, sure. I, I just, I was asking a question still on the STARS 360. Wondering if we'd get some feedback as we're going through this budget process, because we do budget for it. And so, you know, my concern was, do we need the whole 360 bells and whistles, or do what we have in the middle school?
Right.
Would that work, just, you know?
Well, that, I mean, that would be a start, but there's pieces to the whole program that would really, I mean, there's, you know, for instance, the accelerated reader and accelerated math, where you can, again, give instruction and activities at different levels. And the nice thing about that, and, is that students who are ahead have got a way to keep moving ahead. So it challenges our, it's set up, so some of these pieces really offer some instruction and some activities for our, for our children who are doing well. It's not just about the students who are behind.
Well, and I would be really interested in the feedback from the middle school that pilot the bells and whistles one.
Yep.
That goes to the $7 one that's not there.
Right, because they have, they have a pretty good perspective. And originally, I wasn't going to put them in the pilot, but Mr. Cameron, as is his case, was very adamant on how he would like to try. And so, we, we managed to, to get them to, to allow us to do it there as well. But the whole idea is to inform the budget process to go forward. We are waiting a little bit because we need to do some repairs and replacements at the high school and move some computers around. That's going to start next week during vacation, but I need to make sure the technology is up to date and in place at the elementary schools before we start. So I'm hoping we'll be able to start by the end of May, eh, end of March. That's my hope. I'm told within a month, we will have the new computers put in and everything else moved down and around too. But you kind of have to do one building at a time, so, and unfortunately, we only have two techs, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill?
So committee forums, are we doing? So, I'm going to thank the high school and the honor society. I went to the soup event tonight. That was very well done. Heard the chorus, who was excellent. And it was a very good event. I know they've been doing it for years. It's my first time there, I'm sorry. But it was a really well, well-attended event. I know some others were there as well, so I want to give them some, some props. And then I'm going to get on my soapbox about the legislator for maybe an hour, if I, if I could. I'm kidding, Wendy, relax. I just want to follow up really quickly. Last time we were here, we, I made a motion and we voted on, really stating out loud, the governor should not mess with the regional transportation, adding wording about when we can appropriate it, or whatever the four words are. After the meeting, I emailed Senator Fatman and Representative Kuros. And, you know, they did respond. I also tweeted it out to everyone I could possibly think of. And Senator Fatman, I know, called our superintendent, Representative Kuros, went back and forth with me a little bit. And their position was that, "Well, that's the governor. We didn't know about that." Which, quite honestly, I'll say live, I don't believe. So, we, we.
Sorry, what'd you say, Bill?
We, we have to stay diligent on, on the, on the legislative piece. And what I'd like to do is add, if we can add to the agenda from now till May, just legislative update. Because the next piece is, is that they're all for, you know, and Governor Baker is, is all about talking about, "We're all in this together." But he, it really falls short when it comes to education. And I know Superintendent talked a little bit about it during his presentation, but they're really not funding public education. They're, they're, and I'm not against charters, I'm not against folk schools, I'm not against anything else, but come up with some new money for that. You can't take money from public education around that, because we're, we're in, we're in dire straits. And, and the fact that, for a year, this Foundation Review Committee went out there and did all these forums, and took all this feedback, and then came up with a report saying that, you know, "We can't go with this 1993 numbers anymore," and that they're doing nothing about it. I mean, there's no, there's no difference in all the special ed money that we spend. That doesn't, that comes out of general education money. So, as we go forward for the next three months, I'm going to inundate everybody, and even this committee, with emails and whatnot around the legislative stuff. And, and we can't, we can't stop holding, holding these, our legislators accountable. They work for us. It's easy to say, "Well, I didn't know that. It was the governor. We didn't see that yet." Well, start seeing it before it goes out, i- i- is, is my feedback to them. Or we're going to start looking for people to run for your position, as far as I'm concerned. So, I'm not going to stop talking about this for the next four months. And, you know, Representative Kuros invited any one of us, I volunteered, Alan, to go and, and, and report at one of the, the committee meetings that are coming up. I'm happy to go if, if I can go as well. But I think they keep chipping away at things, and it's just, it's every, every brick is coming out of public education, and we really have to put our foot down. So what I'm saying to everybody at home is, pay attention, we're going to put all this material up on the website, and you gotta, you gotta hold them accountable. So, I'm going to pause now and let everyone else talk, and I'm going to keep talking about it, you know, through the next couple of months.
Okay.
It's a hard act to follow.
It is a hard act to follow, but, but I'm in complete agreement with your statements. And I also think we, as a school committee, have to do our due diligence, and we have some numbers in front of us now, as opposed to just ideas that we've had the last couple of meetings. And we need to really look at those numbers, because while everything is a tremendous need, we can't always put that need on the backs of our towns either. And so, when these, you know, unknowns start to become known, we really have to look at these needs and, and start prioritizing them, and, and perhaps drawing some lines, and there may be some things we can't, we can't do and we shouldn't send forward. And that's a tough decision to make, but I think we've got to do it. Instead of sending this whole big, you know, nicely wrapped, you know.
Gift.
Gift, whatever, yeah, budget, forward. I think we've got some hard work as a committee to do to really get to some sense. Because we have some real, we, we have some genuine strides we need to make, and we need to make them soon, or we're going to keep falling further and further behind. So, I think we need to flesh that out. I also would like to thank the, is it the fourth grade students at AF Maloney for my homework. I have read this "Day the Crayons Quit" before, but I will read it again and be prepared at our next meeting. A nice thing. I, I like these presentations. I thank the students who came today and their parents and families. And I'd like to see more of that from all of the schools.
Thank you.
I, we're going to be going into the heart of the budget issues. I can tell anyone who's listening, and hopefully there are people listening, because the last thing I want to hear after now taking time away from my family and my profession, that nobody ever brought this up before. We have, and it's already, it'll be posted. We have public hearings, we have public forums, we have budget approval meetings, all of which are open to the, the public at large, to discuss the issues and discuss probably the biggest single item that's going to be taken out of your municipal tax dollar every year. So I'd encourage you to come to the meetings to understand where those dollars are going. I understand we have financial ceiling, but I also understand that I want to, I'm not going to, as a member of this committee, at least my position, and it may be different, everybody's got their own opinion here, I'm not going to short-sheet the children of Blackstone or Millville by giving them a product, an educational product, that's deficient. We're behind. I, in past meetings, told David that, and Alan as well, as well as all the other committee members, I'd be in favor of a strong increase with regard to our technology in this particular instance. I, I think we fell way, way behind in terms of the, the technology used within all our schools. And I think we need to get caught up. And unfortunately, you can just, you know, I mean, the MBTA is a, a good example. You know, we continually cut the budget, cut the budget, cut the budget when we're lieutenant governor, and then when we're governor, it was like, "Whoa, what happened?" Well, guess what? Came home the roost. And, you know, karma. roost. And, you know, karma can come out, somehow play funny tricks on you when it all comes around to sit at your doorstep. So, the way I look at the budget is, first, I want everybody to understand, I don't want Facebook conversation and social media, you know, we're all a bunch of politicians. Let's see. If we need, what's that commercial where they, they bring the genius out to help with the taxes? Let me tell you, this is what we make. Zero. That means nothing, okay? For coming here and, and taking the time, we do it because we have a genuine vested interest in the well-being, welfare, and improvement of our communities. And we do it through the education of our youth. And we do it through incorporating in that educational process their parents, their families, and everybody else that's a member of the, of the communities. So, you need to get involved. You can't, it's not good enough to sit back. I, you know, I, I hope that this time, because I've watched it year in and year out, and this is the process, we come out with a budget, and this will be kind of the first time I've actually been an active participant. We come out with a budget, and we work really hard at it. We do all these public meetings and it, it goes to Millville. Millville makes the decision as to what they're going to cut, or what they're going to accept, or what they're willing to pay, because I don't want to make any judgments. After they're done, it goes to Blackstone and says, well, Millville paid this, so we'll pay the same amount. I, I just think that's capo. I think that's, you know, that's, that's being lazy as, as a leader. I think it's time that, you know, the school has taken a hit in time and year and year out, and we've, we've got to get better. I, I think that the use of the tax dollars has to be more efficient. I think it has to be, I, I think there has to be some level of accountability. I think that the concern of the, of the voters, at least the people and taxpayers, is that we're not transparent enough. I think we, we need to make sure that we market ourselves correctly. We, we disclose what we, that's why I asked. I think they need to see the hard numbers. I think they need to see, this is what we actually lose when we don't invest. That there's a cost to not investing, and this is what it is. It's not just, you know, some intrinsic number or, or the loss of, first of all, you're, you're depleting your child's ability to succeed in the outside world after high school. But more importantly, you take, it's costing us more to maintain a sinking ship, because we're plugging holes all the time. And those plugs cost money. And quite frankly, as a taxpayer, I, I, if I'm going to spend money, I want to spend money. I want to invest money. I don't want to spend it. I want to invest in it. And I can think of no better place to invest it than in children in our communities. So, that's kind of where I'm coming from in the budget process.
Thank you. So, echoing some of the things that have come before us, I'm glad to see the budgets before us. And thanks to the administrators for their hard work. I think that this budget's reactive to a lot of our problems. Technology is reflected, which is great to see. Technology is a deficit. Of course, offerings are going to be increased. One thing that was mentioned was kind of glossed over, Governor Baker had promised that he would increase Chapter 70 by the same amount as the revenue. Revenue went up 4.3%. Chapter 70 was up 1.7%. So, yes, the governor did not come through with what he promised us. He promised 4.3, delivered 1.7. And my rough math with that, that's a difference of just under $300,000 that we were short right there alone. So that was disappointing.
So, I, I'm with you, Bill. We should keep hammering about our legislators. Where's Fatman? Where's Kuros? You know, they, I think they kind of forget where Blackstone and Millville are. I really do. I mean, they'll come around when they're running for office, but after that, they don't even, they don't know where we are. But, I'm putting my Griffin Riley hat for a second. If you've never been to the home show, the, that's coming up February 27th, which is a Saturday. And again, if you've never been there, you probably don't know what it is. It's the winter percussion and the winter guard. Well, what's that? Winter percussion is, basically, it's percussion-driven sort of choreography in a show. And it's a lot of big, loud drums. It'd be great for little kids. Wendy, I think you're a little, you guys would love it. But it's a competition between BMR and a bunch of other various towns. Dartmouth, who's our archrival. But, but again, that's Saturday, February 27th here at BMR, at the high school. You should come out. It's, so it's winter percussion, which again is the drums. And winter guard is more of a show with, or choreography with flags and the rifles and things like that. But again, it's really, it's exciting. Even if you don't have students that are in the, in the district or kids that are not in high school yet, you should come. You should come and see it. I know Griffin's involved in it, so.
Is that inside or outside?
That's, that's indoors. It's all, it's in the gymnasium.
I thought that might be encouraging people to get on.
But that's an example of get people in our buildings, in our facilities, see what we have. Wow, this is the same high school that I went to 30 years ago. Yes, it is. It's not any better. It's not advanced anymore. But what we're doing inside is advanced. We're doing the best we can. But when the governor's giving us 1.7, it's pretty hard to do much better than that. And again, I think our administrators have done a really good job with what they've been given.
All right. I did want to actually follow up a little bit on what Steve was just saying about the home show. There is also more of a dress rehearsal on the 18th that's open to the public too. So if you can't make it to the big show on that Saturday, that Thursday night they're doing. And they said it's kind of nice for the kids to have an audience to kind of, you know, get rid of some of those nerves. And when John was asking earlier about the fine arts stuff, there is a open house type event on February 25th that the school's doing for all those fine arts, music, technology, whatnot. And it is on the new district events calendar, that I'm so happy to see that it has merged all schools on one calendar. So, thank you, Osiris, and whoever else may have did that. I also reached out to him this week, Osiris, regarding the website on the Contact Us. I just found it hard to get around, so I did ask him to add titles when you find your teacher's name, because you may not know who you're looking for. So if you're looking for guidance, at least guidance will show up too. So, I just think it'll help navigate a little bit better. And I guess I was, quickly before the meeting, I was talking a little bit about just the status of the elementary regionalization. And I think, Alan, maybe you could just update us quickly, or Wendy, or Alan, whoever, where we're at.
Sure. I know that I had been filmed earlier this, today, to answer some of those questions regarding regionalization. I know that it's been a topic for a while. At the end, I, I simply said that the, the process would simply be that the school committee would, would put the, the warrant article before both town meetings to open up the regional agreement. And simply to, to change one line to be able to provide more flexibility as to how we educate and to give our students the very best, most efficient, most effective teaching and learning that we can. And I think that's going to be up and broadcast soon.
Well, and thank you, Alan, for, for sitting in and videoing. But what we tried to get across is just the information so that people can become aware. It's going to go on the cable stations, on Facebook. But we also wanted to have a conversation on the video about where the money comes from, and the fact that it goes into, you know, where a regional school district. We've been regionalized, so that our entire district is regionalized. So it's a matter of bringing together Blackstone and Millville Elementary Schools. So, just, just point of clarification that we are a regional, regional school district, but bringing the two towns together requires the, the opening of the regional agreement and changing or taking out the sentence that says that students will be housed in their, their towns' building. But Alan actually nicely addressed today, as you'll see in the video, just where the money comes from and what happens when, when the 73%, 20%.
Yeah. That's, I know some folks think that the money that comes assessments from Millville only go back to Millville students and, and the same for Blackstone. However, the assessments that the towns give us are based upon the percentage of students from each town that attend. And it, it runs right around that 71, 29, 72, 28, 70, 30. But all of that money comes together along with Chapter 70, along with federal and state grants, along with circuit breaker, and along with a lot of other smaller sources, uses of funds that allow us to then provide education for all 1,735 students that we have.
So, he finished filming, he finished filming today. And I think, and I'm not sure, Tara, if this is what you're getting at, but I think we need to have a conversation because we're coming to the end of the road for regional, for this committee. I know I've been sparing it for four years, and, and I don't know if there's much more we can do except put it on the warrant. So, I am going to be sitting, hopefully, with Jesse next week and finishing the video and getting it out there. So you'll have a good-
But what is our date for having to have the warrant to the towns?
Do you know that date?
End of March.
End of March?
Yeah, there's a list.
The warrant date? No. I, I did send Claudette Delinsky an email to get that confirmed, to make sure. So, we want to make sure as a committee that we're-
We meet those-
I thought it was before March, Bill.
I think, and for Millville, I wonder if it's-
Millville's earlier. Millville's earlier.
I think Blackstone is earlier too, because of Millville.
I mean, I think we just have to set a date.
Well, I think we need to-
March 1st, the thing has to go.
But I think we need to agree before we set a date to put it. Are we doing it or are we not doing it? Because I, I'm not comfortable if, if, if this is a divide on the committee. I think we, we can't just have one person make a decision. I think we all need to say, are we doing it or are we not doing it before we go and put something on a warrant?
Are we doing what?
Are we, are we submitting a warrant?
I thought we decided two years ago, but, I mean, what have we been doing for two years then?
We've been doing a study. I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying right now that it's very important that we're either together on this, or, I mean, it, it would only make sense. Do you have that date?
Yeah. You have it until today at 4:30.
Today?
Yeah.
To get an item on the warrant?
I told you it was before.
You mean, we had-
I knew it was early. You can, you can still put it on by, but it has to be other-
Motion on the floor.
Yeah, it has to be other, by other criteria. We should have put a dummy article in and then we could have worked it up.
Dummy's perfect for me.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. For the Town of Blackstone, it says here, Thursday, February 11th, 2016, 4:30, last day to submit articles for ATM. And then Tuesday, March 22nd, the selectmen will sign the warrant for the annual town.
Jim, could you just let everybody out there know who you are?
Sure. I'm James Blile. I'm the chairman of the finance committee in the Town of Blackstone. So the March 22nd date was when the board of selectmen-
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going by that date. I, I mean, I think we can still submit an article.
My, I, I did send an email at like 9 o'clock this morning.
You can't.
But I'm, I'm wondering with Millville-
Ludicrous. If, if we miss a date, then I'm going to lose my mind. Honest to God.
Yeah, because this, the memo I have here was dated January 12th.
There's a, there's a particular way to do it around the dates, but you can't just do it based on the board of selectmen dates. That's carved in stone. But there's ways of getting around it. You just have to do it a different way, that's all.
You'd have to make a motion on the floor.
You have to make a motion on the floor, but you can put it on to the, there's another way to do it, though. There's, there is another way to do it. I just can't, it's late and I'm cooked, so I don't remember. But there is another way. I think we can, through a vote, a majority vote of the board of selectmen.
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The town moderator, would they know that?
I think, well-
I think, I think by the next, our next meeting, I don't care if it's a workshop or not, we need to have confirmation from the Town of Blackstone, the Town of Millville. Can we do this by a certain date? Period.
I think if, if the board of selectmen voted on it as a majority, I think that, I think we need just a simple majority. I think that's the way it works. But maybe Alan could check with Dan Keys.
Yep. I'll check with both.
I'm also pretty sure, once you go to town meeting, you can submit or an article there too.
Yeah.
I mean, not, not to advocate stacking at town meeting or anything, but it's just another way to go about it.
I'd hate to do that, though. I'd want to, I want it at least to be on the warrant so it's, it's published on the website, so everyone sees it.
Got it.
Tara, anything else?
Just that tomorrow is the middle school big fundraiser of the year, volleyball marathon. And apparently, they have $13,000 in pledges as of today. So, super exciting. So, good luck and have fun, kids. And make sure you pay those pledges to parents.
Did they get enough volunteers?
I think so.
What's that?
Did they get enough volunteers?
I think so. It's, it's minimal. So, if you're free, pop in.
Coming over.
Being doing a press releases for that music thing.
So, just to piggyback on, on something that John had stated, I, I'm, I always, I always wonder what the percentage or what the population is of those students under 18 that are in both towns, because we always talk about the, you know, what the percentage is of, of different age groups in the town. And I, I have to assume that our students are a big percentage of our population. And, you know, I, I think we need to take that into consideration when we, we advocate for our students. And, you know, I have three that are in that population. And I think it's, you know, when we talk about budget and when we talk about, and we bring it to the towns, I think we need to look at the population of our towns and, and how many students are in our towns under the age of 18 that we are, we need to be supporting in our towns. They're, they're citizens in our towns, we're citizens in the town. And I think, you know, we're not going to come saying, you know, BBT this, because I know that we hear it all the time, that we shouldn't be compared. But I think the reality is that we need to support the kids in our town. And, and I know both towns, both Blackstone and Millville, have people that have been here, that are raising their kids here, I being one of them. And, you know, it, it's tough to see that we continuously push to, to be at the level of the surrounding towns. And then we, we have pushback. And I think to keep our students moving forward, I think it's extremely important to, to have that seen and, and to, to have that shown by our selectmen. I do appreciate the Blackstone FinCom for coming. So, thank you for coming. We appreciate it. And Dr. Hahe over there has been to quite a few meetings. So I appreciate them coming and listening and hearing, you know, our needs so that our needs can be met in the towns of Blackstone and Millville. I'm off my soapbox, though. One more item, one more update. Based on Alan's proficient review on his evaluation, the school committees, and the school committee's dedication to our district to keep consistency, the committee voted on a 3% increase for the superintendent. The committee is just as invested in all our administrators and teachers that are moving our, our district forward. So I think it's important to share that out and improve our district.
Thank you.
So, that's all I have.
Can we get the discussion on the regional agreement at our next meeting? Can we put that on the agenda?
Yes. You want an update of where we're at based on our information?
I want an update, and I guess I want us as a group to agree that we want to maybe write whatever we want the warrant to say. And then perhaps even a timeline. I know from the study group that I've been involved with, they like the idea of having the warrant, but not necessarily saying, but this needs to start September 1. You know, maybe that we have a discussion about, yes, we want the words taken off of the agreement and looking, then the next group develops what that change, you know, moving the change for. So that it's not like, yes, we want change and now here's the change. Or, yes, we want regionalized elementary schools, combined elementary schools, they're already regionalized. And let's do it tomorrow type of thing. Maybe there's a timeframe we need to talk about. So if we can-
I'm sorry, Wendy, do you mind if I, this, Jane, this doesn't have anything to do with that. Can we, is it possible to get a press release put out about this music program that's going? That's the first I've ever heard of it, quite frankly. So, can we, not only for the, to market and sell the arts program, as I discussed before, but, you know, I think there's a lot of people in town that don't have kids in the school, don't have the need to necessarily look at the website. I mean, for the arts and crafts thing, they just throw a couple of signs at strategic locations. It seems to draw a lot of people. I think there's some people in the town that would just appreciate it, not just people with kids. So, and then maybe, I don't know what towns are, are participating, but their local newspapers as well, maybe. And maybe even post it on to the Facebook page and-
Well, I know the, and Dr. Hahe's here. Did the principals just start Facebook pages? Is that, I know you sent a something home or whatever. I don't, sorry, didn't read it yet. But, and I know Joanne Watson posted Blackstone, Carol Brown started a Facebook page.
Mr. Dudik tweets a lot too, so I'm sure he'll tweet out about it.
And Twitter pa, Twitter handle or whatever. I don't know what he calls it.
I'm talking about formal press release, so to-
Be right, because people who don't have kids-
Worcester Gazette, you know, some of the schools that are participating.
Yeah. Osiris had come out to Millville earlier in November and kind of trained me on the website after it was demonstrated at a committee meeting. And then I set up the Facebook and Twitter feeds for Millville.
And then I set up the Facebook and Twitter feeds for Millville. I think it was December, first week of December. I know he just did the same with AFM and JFK and they were working to get their Facebook. And what happens is Osiris then takes that feed from Facebook and links it into the webpage so that it's there.
But people, but people who want to tie have to like, like, like the page?
Yes. Or, yes. Or what happens is they can go to our website and under Millville, they can see it in the lower right-hand corner and you can get the Twitter and the Facebook feeds there. And Osiris worked to make that happen as well. So, I mean, we sat down, he kind of showed me what to do and we worked it together. And he made sure those feeds for Facebook and Twitter, for at least our building, and Facebook for AFM and JFK show up on our webs- our new webpage. That, again, he showed you guys, I think he was here in November, correct?
Yeah.
So that's when he rolled out the template of what it was going to look like. So it's up to us to kind of roll in as much content as we can. And whenever I get something, I put it on all three places, so it feeds and shows up on Facebook, Twitter, and our website. For what that's worth.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
I'm just going to go over the upcoming meetings. Wednesday, February 24th, 2016, is a workshop, a budget workshop. Thursday, the 25th, is the public, is the public hearing and that'll be held here, correct? And March 10th is the budget adoption. If you'd like anything added to the agenda, I have legislative update and I have regional agreement motion where we stand with that, the information and the dates.
What time are we starting on the 24th?
I have seven, I believe.
Seven?
Seven. We will be entering into executive session, no?
I don't think I have any.
It's on here. It's on here. Oh, okay. So no, we don't have to. John, I wanted you to say that.
We don't have anything important to talk about.
Okay, we are not entering into executive session, so I need a motion.
Motion to adjourn. A motion to adjourn.
Motion made by John, is there a second?
Second.
Made by Bill, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
How do you hear before 9:30?